Okay, welcome everyone. I'd like to reconvene the meeting into open session. Welcome to the Barville School Committee Regular Meeting, October thirteenth, two thousand fifteen, six thirty one P M., Barville High School Media Center, twenty five East Avenue, Harrisville. Members present, all. If you wouldn't mind, please stand and join us in a moment of silence, please. This moment of silence is for Linda DeLude, who worked for many years with the Barville School System as a teacher aide. Thank you. We have none this evening. Item number three. We did have executive session, and there were no votes taken. Item number three, consent agenda, approval of minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of September eighth, two thousand fifteen, regular meeting.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the warrant. Let's see, two thousand fifteen sixteen school warrant number two for the month of August dated September eighth, two thousand fifteen, for grand total expenditure of two million, one hundred forty one thousand dollars and twenty three cents.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the following recommendations for bid proposals. First is for design, an architectural design services bid to R G B Providence Rhode Island in the amount not to exceed twenty five thousand four hundred dollars. The second is a recommendation for ResLite Sports Products from Stony Town, Connecticut in the amount of eleven thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars for a wrestling mat. The next one is W. William L. Callahan Exterior Column Upgrades bid to be awarded to Martone Company Narragansett Rhode Island in the amount of eleven thousand seven hundred dollars. The next one is a high school, Barville High School H V A C Upgrade Bid to be awarded to Industrial Burner Providence Rhode Island in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred and fifty one dollars. Next one is at Steer Farm Oil Pump Bid to be awarded to Industrial Burner of Providence Rhode Island in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Then there is recommending of the high school lighting upgrades to be awarded to Nolan Electric North Sichewa Rhode Island in the amount of eleven thousand six hundred and thirty five dollars. Then there is a baseball backstop at Eccleston Field to be given to United Fence Johnson Rowan in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. And finally, we have, bid was open for business machines, and the recommendation is that Bay Business Machines Incorporated be awarded the bid for a copy machine services on a thirty six month lease.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is a presentation by the public to the school committee. That has been rescinded. I'd like to thank Dr. Pilata for his communicating and working with this group, which led to their election. Item number five, public comment. When having public comment, you can stand up to the podium and state your name and address, and welcome to speak. Okay, hearing none. Item six, personnel. Appointments, leaves of absence, retirements, resignations.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we separately regret the resignation of Lisa Simpson, job coach, Barville High School, effective October second, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the following leave of absences. Kelly Rogers, grade five, William L. Callahan School, honor before one twenty nine sixteen through the end of the school year, two thousand fifteen sixteen school year. And Kyle Wilson, grade four, Steer Farm Elementary, honor before ten nineteen fifteen through eleven two fifteen.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we make the following appointments. Gina Oseto, Barville Middle School After School Yearbook Advisor, nine hundred dollars. Brittany Hill, grade two, oh, she really should have separated those. Let's take that one, please.
Second.
Our motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Brittany Hill, grade two, teacher for William L. Callahan School, Step One, effective nine fourteen fifteen.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Gina Valenti, clerk, Barville High School, effective ten fourteen fifteen at the current contractual rate, and David Flores, computer network technician, effective eleven two fifteen.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we make the following bellar appointments. They're all at thirty dollars for up to five, for up to four hours a week, except for the first one, who is the lead, is up to five hours a week. So it's Erin Cahill, Amy Deely, Amy Blue, Lisa Gades, Tara Staples, Edward Centoro, Catherine Fleming, Jennifer Smith, Charlene Chavette, Joshua Goodwin, Samantha Stanton, Molly Govia, Ashley Plou, and Matthew Dagnall, and Erin Cahill is the one for five hours.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we make the following athletic appointments. Usable Lopes, Barville High School Girl Soccer Assistant, seventeen thirty five. Anthony Machucci, Barville High School Wrestling Head Coach, twenty, two thousand two hundred ninety dollars plus one hundred longevity. Brayton Round III, Barville High School Wrestling Assistant Coach, eighteen thirty plus one hundred longevity. David Sherman, Barville Middle School Basketball Coach, thirteen hundred plus four hundred longevity. Mark Brissette, Barville Middle School Girls Basketball Coach, thirteen hundred plus four hundred longevity. Andrew Brissette, Barville Middle School Girls Fast Pitch Softball, thirteen hundred. Patrick O'Connell, Barville Middle School Wrestling Coach, thirteen hundred. Judith Farrell, Elementary Cross Country Assistant Coach, six seventy five plus one hundred longevity. And then the following volunteers. Nick Matuno, Barville High School Girl Soccer. Andrew Brissette, Barville Middle School Girls Basketball. And Mark Brissette, Barville Middle School Girls Fast Pitch Softball.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint leaders for our Barville High School Clubs for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Eric Tupper, Barville High School Fishing Club. Richard Goodrow, Debate Team. And Barbara de Moscow, Physical Education Club, all at three hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item, seven, old business. Fiscal Year fifteen, BSD Budget Update.
Motion to open?
Motion to open and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I can't hear you. Oh, sure.
Okay, so you have a recommend, you have a recommendation before you to transfer funds from salary and benefit line items and from contracted service line items, transferring the amount of fifty one thousand five hundred from salary and benefits, forty two thousand dollars from the contracted service, transferring them to the technology support salary and benefit line item of sixty five thousand, transfer to the athletic equipment line item of twenty eight thousand five hundred. And we were able to make these transfers based on some salary and benefit savings that we had based on some, some hiring of certified staff members.
Thank you.
I make a motion to support the request of a transfer of fifty one five hundred from salary and benefits and forty two thousand from contracted services, and change that to sixty five thousand to technology support salary benefits, and twenty eight thousand five hundred to athletic equipment line.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is fiscal Year fifteen, Rink Budget Update.
A motion.
Second.
Motion to open and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's just for informational purposes at this time. There's no transfers that are requested.
Any discussion? Any questions for Robin Anderson? Hearing none. No motion.
A motion received and filed.
Second.
A motion and a second received and filed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
School Bus Routes Update.
Motion open.
Second.
Motion open and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a bus company representative provide you a report, Mr. Chairman. If you could just come to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jane Pepler. I'm the branch manager for the Barville Terminal. We did take a look at all the routes. I know there was some concern with the printed routes that we had furnished to you, I guess, the end of August. No, the beginning of August, I believe. Some of the routes, the way that the times printed, they were well over an hour. That's a glitch in our system, and I'm working with our corporate office in New Britain to get that rectified. Part of the problem is that some of the buses go to the middle school before the high school. Well, our system doesn't like that because the middle school has a later start time. So that throws everything off. So I had all of the drivers report their times to me, you know, their pickup and drop offs. In the morning, it's easy to gauge because I know what time every bus leaves that yard. And I know what time they get to, to the high school, the middle school, and the elementary schools because if they're late, the principals are reporting that to me. So my concern was more in the afternoon, and I can assure you that they're all less than an hour.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Pepler?
What about the school buses that are half full, and some are, some are full and some are only half full?
Well, it depends what area of the district that they service. You know, the Pasco area is very much more populated than, you know, out in the outskirts. So, you know, we kind of do the routing based on areas. You know, I have one bus that has two stops. It's filled to the gills, but it does two stops in Pasco, and then it's empty for the high school, middle school. It's empty within fifteen minutes of leaving the school. So with, you know, the routing is based more on the area to keep the times in line than, you know, we could look at shifting a couple around. But we do that if there was an issue with times. There really isn't an issue with times. So, you know, we did do a little bit of changing stops and putting them onto other buses because there were timing issues. But if capacity isn't a problem and timing isn't a problem, we leave it as is.
The other concern I have is that buses stop, this is for high school and middle school especially, buses stop every other house. Is it possible to congregate them in one spot and make one stop rather than make all of, all of these extra stops that seem to be made?
Well, typically we do that. I guess I'd need more information as to specifically where you're referring to so I could take a look at it. You know, we do depot stops unless it's a rural area that, you know, there's no sidewalks though for safety issues. We have to do, you know, house stops because there's no sidewalks or, you know, the, the side of the road isn't, isn't wide enough for, for safe walking.
Anyone else have any questions for Ms. Pepler? Hearing none. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I want to see a motion.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion to receive and file. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is policy approval of R I L L Sports Dual Participation. Second reading.
A motion to approve dual sports participation, R I L L Sports for second reading and dispens of the reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion?
I tell you, it's a tough thing. I had enough time playing one sport. I play two.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item eight, Superintendent's Report.
Motion open.
Second.
Motion open and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item one, HPV Vaccination.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a lot of controversy surrounding the HPV vaccination required for seventh graders. If you recall, in the very beginning, when the Health Department came out with this, they made it a requirement in that there was discussion about students would not be able to attend school if they did not get the immunization. The Health Department since has backed off that. Children are allowed to come to school because there is a waiver form that they can't sign for religious purposes, which I included a copy of that in your packet. And I also handed out to you this evening the compliance report of the hundred and ninety eight students in the seventh grade. It indicates how many students received the vaccination, how many are still noncompliant. And the middle school is still making phone calls to those parents whose students have not had the HPV vaccination at this point. So it's going to be an ongoing process throughout the whole school year until we're in compliance. But we can assure you at this point that no student will be kept out of school if they are noncompliant.
Any questions for Dr. Pilata?
What happens if we don't get, if we get to, we, we don't have nobody with noncompliance? What happens if we have some people who just don't do it?
Well, we're not going to keep them out of school for it. I imagine we will report that information to the Health Department, and they're going to have to make a decision on that.
Okay. Any other questions? I need a motion. Next item, number nine, Administrator Reports.
Motion to accept administrative reports with thanks barring any questions from the committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yes. I just want to congratulate Mrs. Lauren Izzo for being recognized as a Japachik Grange two thousand fifteen Teacher of the Year, and then the two thousand fifteen Rhode Island Grange Teacher of the Year. I think those are awesome recognition, so.
Thank you for that.
And just a reminder, I won't personally be there because of a work thing, but next week is homecoming at the high school.
This Saturday, isn't it?
This Saturday, yeah, seventeenth.
We'll be down at Parents Weekend.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item, ten, Reports of School Committee Subcommittee's. Rink Subcommittee.
Motion open.
Second.
Motion open and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So we did have a meeting at the Rink Subcommittee. We discussed several items that were on the agenda. And it is our goal to review them, receive an updated financial report, and have another meeting soon, hopefully by the end of November, so we can come back at our December meeting with any recommendations, additional recommendations for the school committee to consider. And that's all I have for report. Everyone has received the minutes of our meeting. And they should be aware of what we discussed. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none. Do we need a motion? Moving on, Correspondence Communications. I have two things I'd like to talk about. First, I would like everyone to remind everyone that the substance abuse presentations that are going to take place by John Morello, Barville High School on October thirtieth, and at the Barville Middle School on October thirtieth. At the high school is eight to nine thirty, and at the middle school is eight to twelve thirty. The other thing I have for communication is for the Redistricting Advisory Committee. There's a PowerPoint presentation scheduled at each school by Dr. Pilata. You've all received this in your previous package this month. So it would be nice to have us in attendance. It's going to be, going to be very informative meetings, and you have the dates and the times for each meeting. Any other correspondence communications? Hearing none. We'll move along. New Business. Item one, Barville High School Overnight Field Trip Request.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
William L. Callahan Overnight Field Trip Request.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Policy six four three two point one, Meloxone Policy, first reading.
Motion to approve policy and not read the policy itself.
Um, there's a typo.
Okay, so the motion's going to be to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion?
We fix the typo in the back page. School nurse teacher will endure that all other relevant staff are aware. We change that to ensure.
And I, I believe there's one more typo.
What was that?
Um, it's on the back page. It's the second bullet down. I believe it's supposed to say, with manufacturer's instructions to avoid extreme colds, comma, heat, comma, and or excellent.
Could you please say that again?
Yep. On the back page, under the storage section, the second bullet down. I believe it's supposed to say with manufacturer's instructions to avoid extreme colds, comma, heat, and or excellent.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve policy P six four two zero, student dress policy for its first, first reading and dispens of the reading.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item, Approval of Homeschool Applications.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the homeschool applications as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Hearing none. Whoop, discussion?
Are these students also subjected to the tests that other students have to take? I mean, like the park, et cetera?
Yeah, they're required, no, not required to take the standardized test, but they are required to submit evidence that they've met the expectations of the curriculum. They're not required to take the standardized test.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item thirteen, Committee on Agenda Items. Item one. Item fourteen, Pending Issues. Five Year Facilities Assessment Building Committee. Have an update for us today? Anything to report? Next item, Football Field Lighting.
Nothing new.
Anything to report? School Redistricting Committee.
I can give you an update on that, Mr. Chairman. We had our initial meeting with the members. And we, we elected a chair, vice chair, and a recording secretary. I was elected chair, and Dot volunteered, and she was elected vice chair, and Robin was elected secretary. Subcommittee chairs were appointed. Individual members signed up for various committees. I believe I sent you a copy of that, let's serve, with the members of each of those committees. The, the subcommittees will now meet between January and December, and then, I'm sorry, excuse me, between now and December, and they will report out to the full committee on January seventh. The original me, second meeting was January fourteenth. That was rescheduled to January seventh. At that time, the subcommittees will report out to the full committee. There'll be discussion on that. If there needs to be further work, then the subcommittees will go back and do further work in the subcommittees. And there'll be a follow-up meeting in February to review all the hard data and projections at that point. And I believe I've sent you out the meeting dates, when they will occur between now and the end of the school year. But if you're having discussions with your constituents in the community, you know, assure them that there's going to be two public meetings that will be held, and those, those are scheduled sometime in May. But the implementation of the plan is not going to take place until September of two thousand seventeen. So there's plenty of time to have a review. There's plenty of time for people to have input into the process. And I believe that would, that would summarize pretty much where we are with the Redistricting Advisory Committee, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that update.
And on the backstop, you approved a bid tonight for the backstop. So Mr. Fons will contact the low bidder, and they'll initiate that process as soon as they can to put up the backstop.
So, Mr. Chairman, will, can we take backstop off the pending issues? Since it's all right, since it's being done.
I make that motion that we do that, remove that.
Second.
A motion and a second to remove backstop from pending issues. Discussion on that? Discussion?
Yeah, I guess it was a month ago, or just, just recently, we talked about this, and both Dr. Pilata and Dave both cautioned against the kind of haphazard type of operation and going for the more traditional route. And as you saw, one of the groups that wanted to help us was three times more than the, the group that got the bid. So I, I, I think that that was good advice that we got, and, and a good, and a good resolution.
And we did save, we did save a few thousand dollars because DPW did take down the fence. Am I correct, Dave?
That's right.
So that saved us the construction of taking down the fence.
Dr. Pilata, my question is, is, does this need to be brought before the town council at all for any reason? I know you had, and Dave had had discussion, Dave, Mr. Fons had had discussions with the council and the Board of Administration. Those discussions are not needed now to move forward?
No, because of the information that we received from the, from Mr. Pachico, the town council president, was that the school department was responsible for the maintenance of the facility based on an ordinance. So we just. So we just, uh, uh, took that information and we proceeded to put it out to bid. And with the savings that we had in the, uh, staffing account by hiring teachers on a lesser step, we were able to cover the cost of that, of that fence.
Very good.
So we can notify the town council and they can, if they wanna notify the budget board or whatever, right? I just notify them that we're putting it up.
That it has been taken care of.
Yeah, that, yeah, that, that's res- resolved, yeah.
I'll send a letter.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion? Very good.
Vote.
Did you vote, give me a motion? The motion to remove the backstop. Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item fifteen.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.